Call to order this special meeting of the Carabelle City Commission is Tuesday, July 12, 2022. Meeting is being conducted in the Carabelle City Hall chambers. We'll open with a prayer by Commissioner Allen, and then I will say the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Our God and Father in heaven, we're so grateful that we have this opportunity to come together and talk about the things that would help and help the citizens of our lovely community. Ask you to be with us in wisdom and understanding that we might do that which would be right and your side as well as would be beneficial to our loving people. We ask this in the name of your son, our Savior, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great body for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The only item on the agenda today is item one, discussion of possible action concerning Summer Camp Water and Sewer. This is our second special meeting on this item. And on our last June 21 meeting, we had the St. Joe Company representatives here, and they had presented, I'm just going to try to go over it real quick because I don't think Mr. Keith was with us. They had presented a proposed transition plan, and they wanted Carabelle to assume the responsibility for the day-to-day operations of the water sewer utilities out there at Summer Camp with making new water, the sanitary continue with the pump out like they're doing now, the pump and haul, maintenance of the plants and the facilities, billing for collections and for water and sewer and tap fees, turning the accounts on and off. They wanted Carabelle to keep separate books for St. Joe Company and for some certain time, I don't think they had said the amount of time, the books would be separate from the Carabelle Water and Sewer Enterprise books. St. Joe would cover any operating deficits or actual cost with no markup until somehow there was some break-even point or that we were to decide a time limit. I'm not, you know, we're just, we're just still in discussion. They wanted the right to the operating records. They wanted to retain ownership of the facilities during the management period. This would be a management period, and that's something that we need to keep in mind. They wanted to retain ownership of the facilities. They would secure the operating permit for the wastewater treatment plant, including any required connections, lift station startups and inspections typically required. And they are willing to discuss an underwriting or operating cost. The plant, the ownership of the water plant and wastewater treatment plant would fully transition to the city of Carabelle once we had an agreement. And then Carabelle would continue to operate the facility. So this is, there was a feasibility study done for interconnection of both utilities, and then they came back with this proposal. So how do we want to move forward? Let Russell speak to us on this? Okay.
All right. So I'll summarize in general terms what they're asking here, and I think you identified all the items there. But generally, St. Joe is asking Carabelle to manage their system. It would be similar to if St. Joe hired a contract manager to come in and operate their system for them. That's Carabelle would serve in that role. So that it would be owned and maintained, ownership would be under St. Joe for a period of time while Carabelle operated the system. And, you know, St. Joe has to submit their financials to the Public Service Commission each year, so they would ask that Carabelle prepare those financial documents for them each year. And in lieu of a management fee, St. Joe would cover the operating deficit or the actual cost with no markup. So Carabelle would then have to keep track of time that employees spend working on St. Joe's work, and then St. Joe would then pay the city for that effort with no markup. They would also pay for the operating costs, so chemicals, electricity, anything that it takes to run the system, St. Joe would pay for that. So as they've outlined it here, I don't see that Carabelle would have to come out of pocket for any expenses. All that would be covered by St. Joe. But Carabelle would have to come out of pocket, well, and that's not the right way to say it, Carabelle would have to provide the staffing to conduct the management of the system. So that would require some operation, and Charlie, I think, could speak to that in terms of how much time that would take and how much staff would have to be added in order to perform that work. So that's the initial period where Carabelle would manage their system. At some point, they're asking that Carabelle take over the system. And item 2C here in their outline says, "St. Joe is willing to discuss underwriting operating costs for a period of time." So even though, for example, that the system may not pay for itself, St. Joe would be willing to cover that cost for a period of time. And I would recommend that that period of time would be until it pays for itself.
Last thing you said, we repeat, that's you.
Okay. Item 2C says that St. Joe is willing to discuss underwriting the operating cost for a period of time. So I think what they mean here is that once Carabelle takes the system over, if the system cannot pay for itself, cannot fund itself, then St. Joe is willing to cover the deficit for a period of time. And I think that period of time needs to be until it will pay for itself. Just in concept, I think this is, from my opinion, it seems like an appropriate way to approach taking that system on as management for management and then ultimate ownership of the system. To me, it seems logical. I think it protects the city. And, you know, there's going to have to be some legal agreements drawn up to make sure that the city's protected, and I'm sure Dan can do that adequately. But I think the city needs an out. If something's not working, there needs to be an out in that agreement so the city can terminate it, pass it back to St. Joe. And even for the ownership, even to have an ownership position, I think the city of Carabelle needs an out for that. Did I make sense in how I laid that out? So I think the first thing that we need to consider is, can the city of Carabelle do it with the current staff? And will they have to bring on additional staff in order to manage that work? And I think Charlie would probably do best in that regard.
I had one, and I know Mr. Monk is here as well for concern, and I appreciate it. And if you have anything, anytime you want to speak, please just let us know, and Mr. Charlie too, please let us know when you're ready, if you have any comment. I have a concern from what we have experienced with St. James Bay. And correct me, please, if I'm wrong, but the city took on St. James Bay and expecting it to have about 400 accounts and gave reuse water to St. James Bay, 600,000 gallons a day, I believe, is the agreement free of charge, costs money to make reuse, costs money to pump it out there, and hoping that the 400 accounts would help offset that expense and the expense of operating that system there. And that has not happened because of the downfall, downturn in the real estate industry. And then now it seems like some things that are being said by the owner is that people no longer want those smaller lots, that they want to buy two lots at a time and put one house on two lots. And so that's going to eventually reduce the number of accounts that we would have in that area. But the main thing is that the economy fell during the time or shortly after the city took over that area, that subdivision, and we have not, it has not grown to provide revenues that we were, the city was expecting. And I don't, I don't want to see the same thing happen at Summer Camp. I fear that right there.
Yeah, I would agree with you. And you can certainly see that occurring, given the atmosphere right now. But the way that I think the city would be protected from that is for this initial period, and it may be two years, it may be 10 years, you know, we don't know. But for that initial period, Carabelle is simply operating the system, providing management services for the system. Now, in their outline, they say, "In lieu of a management fee, St. Joe covers operating deficits or actual costs with no markup." Seems to me that Carabelle would be going way out of their way to operate the system with only their costs being covered. So I don't know, maybe there's room there to negotiate with them in terms of adding a management fee on top of the cost. I mean, I would think that's reasonable to request.
Well, it seems like we would have to keep separate, not only just separate billing, accounting books for billing, but we would have to keep a separate, completely separate budget. We would have to understand what are the chemicals, even, you know.
I guess the labor employees, the accounting side of it.
That's right. Fees collected, all those things, yes.
Right. So detailed as to what are their uniforms costing. You know, we'd have to be set up as a completely separate business. And then, you know, we are talking about in our next budget, hiring someone to help with water sewer and the billing, on the billing side. And, you know, we could, might have to end up being, if we decide to do this, a full-time person that can handle that, that account. And not that it's going to be overwhelming with taking collections every day, but it's just a mere fact, a mere fact of having to go through the process of setting up the accounting of it and maintaining the accounting. And then you did talk about that Carabelle would prepare the financial annual report for the Public Service Commission. And so that would be done most likely by our James Moore CPA. So that would be part of the cost as well. I mean, there's just a hidden cost everywhere that we really haven't discussed at this point.
But as my understanding, all those would be paid for by St. Joe.
Well, we would, and I agree with what's being discussed. It was heavy on my mind when we talk about operational costs, them reimbursing operational costs. Operational costs would include, in my mind, that we have to make sure it's clear that all these expenses, administrative, et cetera, are covered along with any expense incurred.
That's right. Any repairs.
Right. Any expense.
Right.
A new tire.
Yes, exactly. A new heat pan. I wonder what the cost is.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. Software.
Yes.
SCADA systems.
And then we did put that in an agreement, or something that we wanted them to provide SCADA systems.
Right. We did. And they're going to perform the upstart for the plant. That's on, all that cost would be on.
And the permitting.
And the permitting.
Time to do that.
Now, that's on the sewer park?
That's on the sewer park.
Okay. Explain that to me, Russell. I read through that information, and I see that covered, but I also see they're going to continue with the pumping, pump-haul process. Is it going to be a combination of both, or?
It will.
The new, that facility, I understand, and I'm not the person to answer that, Charlie is, and you are, that system, from what I've been told as a layman, has to have a certain amount of volume to going through that plant to make it feasible to operate.
That's right. That's correct. So I would, I would say that for a period of time, they're going to have to continue the pump and haul. There's going to have to be some lift station improvements, some force main improvements.
Right.
They'll have to be made. That's their responsibility to do that. And it's also their responsibility to start that plant up. I think there'll be some permitting involved there, there'll be some equipment that needs to be replaced and upgraded just to get it started. All that would be on them. You know, it could take one, maybe two years for that plant to be ready to come online. And prior to that time, they'll continue the pump and haul. So to answer your question, you know, they'll continue with the pump and haul until that plant is ready, permitted, and has enough flow.
And I thought it would take about two years to get it up and operating because they still have a lot of connections they have to do as well. And they have to, I'm sure, present something to the DEP and Mr. D.R. Horton. They've sold several lots to the developer, D.R. Horton, out there. I believe they said 80 lots total. But to move forward, they've got to get, they've got to let the DEP know they're doing something to get this in process. I think that the DEP won't let them build, begin to start building out until they have some way to effectively manage their wastewater instead of the pump and haul.
Right. Question I have is, well, one of the questions, while we're on that subject, what is the number, maybe it's Charlie's question, what is the number of users or customers that we're, that is needed to operate that sewer plant?
They said it was 72 at the last one.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two is the minimum needed to operate.
The sewer plant. And they're at 38 right now?
And they're at 38 presently. But there's a number of connections, and then there's actual flow. So there may be that many connections, but if no one's living there in December, it won't matter. You know, it needs that flow.
That's correct.
So there's some other considerations.
Second homes.
Yeah.
And so they, D.R. Horton currently has 34 lots purchased, and that they, when we met last month, they were 60 days out from the first sale. So that within a month, they'll be selling the first of those 34 houses. And they have a contract for some more lots. But really, you need the 72 that they said, full-time, full-time houses, full-time occupancy.
Users, yeah. But again, that's on them to make that determination when the plant is ready to come online.
Okay. Mr. Keith?
I'm sorry for not making earlier meetings, but I was probably out of town and didn't see them. But I've seen this one out of town, just reading their phone today, and I happen to be in there. But my question is, being we're on force mains and stuff, pump outs, are y'all aware of that the Summer Camp Park down toward Church of Point is not connected to the Summer Camp Park at the water sewer?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure of that. And that was one of my biggest goals of being here today, that the force main should have been put in there for that pump station down there to be operational.
Right. Right. And that's a good point. Brett, I guess you brought that up because, you know, let's just, I'm just laying out a scenario here. Let's say that Carabelle operates the system for a period of time, it's working, and there's enough flow, and they end up taking over the ownership of the system. And then to build out, to finish building out the rest of Summer Camp, there's some force main like that that needs to be installed, or some other gravity main that needs to be installed. It needs to be written in the agreement that St. Joe is responsible for installing the infrastructure for future development within the Summer Camp area. So if they need to bring some lots on it, it needs to be their responsibility to install gravity or force main or a lift station, whatever's necessary to serve lots within their development.
Just as any developer would. Because that east side that you speak of, Keith, they have, there's multiple lots there that have, there's nothing.
Right.
You know, I think, I don't even know if they, I can't remember if they've got the infrastructure along the roadways and the actual planted subdivisions, but it is no way hooked to the wastewater treatment plant, on the north side of 98. That's a major investment.
That's right. And it needs to be their responsibility to build that infrastructure.
Now, is there some kind of a small lift station over there on that side where they're doing pump and haul now?
There is. There's actually a large lift station over there.
On the east side?
On the east side.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they're pumping and hauling from two different lift stations right now?
Three.
That pump and haul would come to the Carabelle wastewater treatment plant, the waste.
Correct. So part of it is now, and part of it's going to Wakulla. So it will probably all come to there.
And that would be part of the cost as well, is treating that?
That's true.
So we charge eight cents a gallon.
Okay.
We're getting paid now.
So that could continue, I mean, that can be part of the agreement or a separate agreement. They may want to take it to Wakulla for whatever reason. We certainly have the capacity here for it.
I had plans on setting up a dump area at St. James Bay master lift station, so they wouldn't have to drive so far if we could make something happen for the long term. Because it is going to be a couple of years. I mean, as Keith had mentioned, there is no force main from their master lift station. It doesn't go anywhere. So all that infrastructure has to be put in. The other two lift stations, there's one at the restaurant and one at those buildings next to the houses, next to the restaurant. Neither one of those go anywhere. They're connected together, but they don't go anywhere. So all that has to be run down the highway and out to the wastewater plant before it come online. With all that said, it's probably going to take a couple of years.
And then what about their water plant? Is every lot connected to their water plant right now?
I don't think every lot is. And there's probably some of that infrastructure that would need to be built out as well. I'm sure it is.
Did you say every lot? Are you talking about Mayor the first phase and second phase?
The whole, the whole setup?
499 lots.
Well, there's part of it there, there's not even a road.
Right.
Yep. There's only about half of it down there that there's infrastructure and roads. The remaining of it, I think it's 273, something like that. That hadn't even been plotted, no roads or anything.
Right. It's not even planned. True.
Another question would be on the water. Are they going to allow the city to cut the roads to put the water lines in, or they're going to make a directional bore under the road? Is it considerable difference in the cost for that team?
Well, here's what I'd say to that. The roadways will remain under the ownership of St. Joe. So the, ultimately, Carabelle would have a utility easement for the water sewer system within there right away.
They're on the other side of the paved asphalt, there are a lot over there. You've got to get a line to that.
Right. I guess what I'm saying is, it's, I think that would be up to them as the owners of the roadway.
I'm sure it would be. But it's up to you guys to accept it like it is, or make them tell you if you're going to do a directional bore, and then the cost there, circa a big cost versus cutting that road.
So as we do it now without Summer Camp, if you were in St. James Bay, or you were in Lanark, or you were anywhere else, if your water line was on the other side of the road, the person putting the house up would pay to have the directional bore worked up? And it would be, I would assume it would carry the same out there.
It should.
Yeah, it should.
Yeah. That brings up the point about interconnecting the water system. I think that's important. Carabelle would want that. So as part of the initial agreement that we may develop for this, I think we should, I think we should at least ask that St. Joe fund the interconnection of the water system. That would be from the point of the condos and tie into their well, tie into their well field. And I think that provides some reliability for Carabelle and also some flexibility in how that system's operated in St. Joe. Long-term, it would provide reliability for Carabelle. So if a storm comes through and knocks out Lanark, for example, then water could be pumped in the other direction from Summer Camp. So I think that's an important element to ask St. Joe to fund.
Is that something we would wait to do until after we take it over completely or before?
I think before because to operate the water system, I think it would be more efficient to operate it in that manner.
I have another question here. On the water main from St. James Bay to the condos. I ain't an engineer, but I know you are, and I'm pretty sure you're aware of this, but what size line is that? On the St. James Bay connection to the condos, is it going to be big enough to handle 500 homes plus and all the fire flow and everything that you're going to need out there?
No, it won't. But here's how that would operate. And that's an eight-inch main, so we would connect that.
I don't think that's an eight-inch main. It might be.
I'll double-check our map.
I'm going to say it's six or something like that, a four main. But it may be of an eight-inch, but that's a big main if it's an eight-inch, it's good.
I'll double-check that. I'll double-check that. It should be an eight-inch main.
I agree with you.
But that would be used to flow through their system, their treatment system, or actually, that would be finished water. So we could take that direct to their ground storage tank and fill that ground storage tank, and then from there, it would serve the community.
Right.
So the volume and the pressure from the ground storage tank would serve it.
So originally, back when you were there, we had put that extra junction in at St. James Bay to get the water all the way down there. But it's not the purpose to get the water there to feed, to feed from Lanark system and St. James Bay system to pressurize Summer Camp. It's only going to feed their ground storage facility, and their pumping system that's already there will feed Summer Camp. It's just going to fill the ground storage tank.
Right.
It's not going to pressurize the system.
Okay.
I just thought it'd be easier.
So why would we have?
I've been out of the loop a while. I've been enjoying life.
You know, while they have 38 users, that doesn't mean that it's not going to require that much.
Sure. But their wells and their water system will have to come online. But if it takes 10 years from now, or five years, or four years... But if it takes ten years from now, or five years, or four years, or even a year or two, if you put the water main in between the condos and Summer Camp's wells, that'll feed the Summer Camp system, and their pumping system will pressurize it again to feed all of Summer Camp. And until we get to somewhere around two hundred homes, we can handle that that way. And I'm guessing at two hundred, but there's a point where it will-
If you're looking at a reverse osmosis plant they have for the water, I'm sure the operation's going to be a lot more cost than what our work lets us out of that.
It is.
What kind of licenses involved in that?
It's still a C.
Still a C, uh, which you, which you're covered under that. But I don't know about sewer man, probably a C also. I don't know that. Things that you need to look at.
Now, Mr. Hartman has said before that we could develop a separate water and sewer rate system that would be separate from Carabelle's water and sewer rate schedule. Is that correct? So if it costs more to operate the reverse osmosis, then we would be able to, to recoup that through rate? And so you said wells, do they have more than one well? Do they have a backup well?
They do, they have two wells.
Okay.
What size are they?
I can't, I don't remember.
They're, they're six or eight, they're not big, they're not real big. Is there any, any discussion at all about ever taking them and put them on the Lanark system one hundred percent? And doing away with reverse, reverse osmosis and put a tower up out there? I mean, we got five towers in the city of Carabelle and Lanark.
Well, in fact, they're-
One tower, they wouldn't need one. Lanark would great.
Yes, yeah, well, the, the ground stores tanks and the pumps would serve that purpose. The ground stores tanks and the pumps would, would serve the, um, the purpose of a, of a tower, so I mean, I think we, we use their, we use the equipment that's there.
I agree with you, but your, 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 your pumps are loaded twenty-four seven. That's the cost. The ground storage tank to fill it up, it kicks off, ten hours later, eight hours later, come back on again. You're not, while they're sitting there in the air with nothing.
Oh, I see.
You don't have a cost. Where, with this out here, you're going to have a cost. And the way this Biden's going, I don't know what that's going to cost. I'll be honest with you.
Well, and there, and there would be a capital cost for the, for the tower, you know, yeah. Think about that over, over design.
But you're, you're in the discussion today, yeah. There's no reason why you couldn't say, put us a tower up and, I'm, I'm just throwing another option out there to y'all. I don't know if y'all heard this or not. But it's, it's, it's available, and it's probably in the long run might be cheaper. I don't know, you've got to maintain that tower. You've got to paint it every so often, you've got to clean it every so often, once a year or whatever, but... I'm just letting, I, I don't have to shut up.
No, it could be, it could be fifteen to twenty to, a, a year, fifteen to maintain it, a year, according to what we're paying now for the five towers. Somewhere fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a year for maintenance of one tower. Yes, sir, Mr. Hartman?
I got some stronger things, but I want to hear kind of all the information. One thing that, I guess we've touched on, but not gotten the full description on, is Charlie, is existing staff? What do we need to add to staff to handle this?
So I think right now they're running, uh, they're, they'll, well, when they come up online, they'll probably be two hours a day. But there's one day a week that I know that they make water, and I would imagine that would be five hours. So it'll be two hours a day, every day, and then maybe another three hours, one day a week to make water, at where they're at to the, right now. They'll make water once a week.
I guess my question is, so you're saying we don't need to add any staff, that you can, you can add that on to everybody's kind of workload without overloading?
No, I was just telling you what it would take to operate up there.
Okay, so we have- What do we need to add staffing-wise to?
So I, I don't really have, as far as operations, I don't have any time, so it's all going to be overtime on my end.
They can't go with new Carabelle and Lanark at the same time. I meant St. James Bay, they got to do it at the end of their shift.
So we'd be stretching, the idea right now is to stretch the people we have to cover this, but pay them a bit of a deal?
Time off, you probably got plenty.
That's where I'm at. Or, yeah, bring somebody in after hours, or, uh, you know, one of us in after hours.
And that's on, that's on the licensed operator side to meet all the requirements?
That's just the operator, I'm not talking about the rest of the system.
Exactly, but what about the rest, I mean, I know there's not a lot of users, but, you know, just-
That's a hard, so right now they're paying, uh, Jones Plumbing to do their taps. Uh, if they continue to do that, that would cut us back a lot of the time. They already have a contractor putting in grinder pumps, they would continue to do that. So now we're just on maintenance. The operator would probably be in charge of most of the flushing, and his two hours, or her, their two hours when they're out there. And we're just talking about the water system at this point. So there's not really a whole bunch more over top of that, but, uh, yeah, there, there could be the occasional water break that we would charge them extra for. You know, all my crew had to go out there and repair something in the road, or do, repair a water break. We would collect the hours on that and charge as if, you know, somebody hit my lot, hit our line and broke it, and did call it located, and I would gather all the hours and all the materials and charge that person. So I would assume that would be the same, as far as the day-to-day. The other thing that we haven't mentioned is, on the day-to-day, is water meters. Uh, we have a radio read system, they don't. That would be a lot of extra time on my guys, they have to stand there and read forty, forty meters. Uh, somebody would have to change them out, I assume, to our radio reads.
You're under discussion, discussion right now. Have them to put the radio reads in.
That's where-
Yeah, I agree with that.
Right, and the radios are some of the-
Have the time to do this.
And I know I keep harping about the SCADA system, but it's an expensive component of the system. And, uh, I don't know if they understand how expensive that is. But it, the, it's what makes the system work with less people being on staff. When you talk about staffing.
Yeah, yeah, automation.
We, we would be minimum staff, but we would be, we would need to be automated to be minimum staff, as well as the water meters, and without the water meters being radio read, you know, I, I've got a guy out there a couple, three days a month trying to read meters, you know, he had to read meters. Or couple days a month.
I agree with that, I think there should be some conditions of operation. If Carabelle's going to operate it, this is what they need to have installed, they need to have the correct SCADA system, they need to have the radio reads.
That would mean to be, um, and I just try to get in front of the situation at the wastewater plant, I would like to be involved with any movement or anything that happens out there, I had to have, and things being happening, going on.
That's a great point, um, if they're going to be swapping out equipment, or trying to-
Add stuff, make stuff work, bring it up online.
Yeah, restore existing equipment, then you're, Carabelle needs to- If there is a component that you don't want to operate.
Correct.
Then we need to get a-
The change needs to be made before we put money in, or somebody puts money into what's there.
I agree.
The, all the development that's going to be going on theoretically with the forty lot blocks that they're selling to develop out, I was, I'm assuming the utilities aren't in the ground, but all the horizontal's not there for those yet, so they can put that in as part of the construction.
So we really haven't seen their prints, but most of their main lines and their, their service lines were put in. But not all of it.
So collection distribution for that?
Yeah.
Is that something, I mean, in the city, you would go out and say, yep, that meets city specs code, whatever, we'll, we'll take dedication of it once you're, is that something we're taking on also?
I guess in the long run, we would assume their system, so-
So we want to know what's going in the ground, is-
Is future going in the ground, for sure, how would we go backwards, so?
Russell done mentioned, if any future lines goes in the ground, and you want St. Joe to cover that cost no matter what time of the year.
Right, right. But what, if I was St. Joe and I was putting them in the ground, and I had the option of putting something in the ground that's, because I know it's going to be ultimately dedicated to the city, I might, because I may not build it with the city code.
No, right, no, I think that needs to be a condition. Any future, any future expansion needs to be done to the, to the city's specification.
Right.
Right. While we're on the subject of staff, uh, I don't know what Shane Dudley's disposition would be, if and when Carabelle takes the system, but he would be a good asset, even, even if he would be able to be hard part-time, you know, he knows that this is the area.
If I understood that right, Shane's going to be there through this two-year, possible two-year transition period that he's paid on their payroll. Maybe after that, I would, but, uh, I've talked to Shane, and I don't, I don't know if he would want to come to work for the city of Carabelle. He may, I would be open to it if there was a spot open.
But if he remained under, oversaw, helped oversee the transition, and he remained on St. Joe payroll, that would be simple.
I, I think that's the way that they had, he's going to be their onsite person. I don't think he's going to change from his, I mean, he's been with them for, I don't know, fifteen years or better, you know, he's, he's covered the one, one retired, someday, you know. I think that, but I would, I would hire him if we had a spot open, he's a good guy.
And for accounting, uh, you said that Jones Plumbing put in the meters, and they had a contractor installed and got grinder pour, grinder pumps. If that continued that way, that would also be simpler for accounting.
Right, I would, I would expect it to continue that way. I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect that to change.
For now.
We would come and set the meter, but somebody has to do the work. And I have that done now, we, we don't do that work at this point.
And are they, I might have missed it a minute ago, are they using radio read meters now?
No.
Okay, so they've got thirty-two, thirty-eight, all right, without that. You can, you can work around that part. Or have them put radio read meters in those thirty-eight?
Right, it, it wouldn't be hard to do at this point, there's not that many meters we're talking about.
But moving forward?
Yeah, all new meters need to be, uh, radio read, those, those thirty-eight need to come back out of the ground.
Those thirty-eight need to be changed out.
Okay.
The radio read. That's my view.
Yeah, they could do that.
Like you said, they're that mini right now.
That's a small cost.
They'd arrive at the city of Carabelle for that cost one day.
And, and would the staff, does the staff want to work overtime? I mean, I, I, they probably don't mind it.
So we kind of mentioned it a little bit, but I, I really, uh, I haven't sat down for a full discussion, I don't know if we've really got close enough for it. But I, I will. So we're just talking about a couple of us at this point. We were talking about operations in the water plant, so, so like, that's what I'm asking.
For what time, the time off we give today? Do we want to work, or do we want to less?
Well, there are three of us with water license.
Um, if, if you're filling the ground stores tank with finished water from Lanark, you don't need an operator at Summer Camp, is that true?
Correct.
So, so for a period of time, you wouldn't need a-
So the short period of time, we're talking about this overtime, or however we're going to pay for operations, if that two-year, or whatever it takes to get a pipe in the ground, uh, and the GEP will-
Yeah.
Recognize both systems are connected, and you get D E P permitting for it, then it's just a concession, or just an add-on to our system, it doesn't require any more operations.
You're right, but, but until that pipe's in the ground, you would, you would-
I have a question there. Are, are you saying that reverse osmosis is going to be shut down? For that period of time?
Till it gets big enough to where it has to come back online, or maybe something else at that point, I mean, I don't know.
And at that point, you're going to put in there that St. Joe brings that plant back up to speed, so it's working more? And it'll see Carabelle begin.
I don't, I don't know where, that's a hard one to say where it would be at when we get to that point.
Yeah.
If you had, in my opinion, standing here today, I would say sell the reverse osmosis and put something else in. But I, I, I don't have, I don't have, that's a long way down the road to make speculation for sitting here today.
I was just another option to look at.
So right now-
And you're hearing the project coming.
Right now, then, you would, if we were to take it over next week, that reverse osmosis plant would operate to these thirty, thirty-eight houses for now, and then the other houses that D R Horton brings on between now and whenever we can get that connection from the condos to the ground storage tank to provide Lanark water out there.
Correct.
That's per, that's permitting as well, to do that.
Correct.
So that could take a year.
Would need to, I, I look at the whole thing as being a two-year period, or almost two years. This might come in a little bit before, but, and that's saying that you started working on it now. We wait till the first of the year to work on it, you know, you're going to have that much more time to it. Yeah, I mean, it's just, you got to get pipe in the ground, and, uh, buying pipe valves, and, and getting engineering work done, and permitting work done, and get the contractor bid to go in, it's a long period of time, that's about a year. And then you got a year to put it in the ground.
It won't come swell.
Yeah, I mean, it might go quicker than a year, it's not that, the water line's not that long of a job.
Yeah, and, and about, say, half of it is off of the right-of-way.
Right, they could go pretty quickly.
It may, it may get quick.
The sewer portion of it, a lot of it is on the right-of-way, and a lot of it is through some woods that's not even developed or eroded in, in some cases. And that may take some engineering. The sewer side of it's a lot more in-depth, and I think Russell and myself should be in front of the, all of the development that goes on in the sewer system. I want Russell's opinion on making sure it's getting done correctly, the parts are bought correctly, and as Keith said, we have specifications booked. And all that gets done to our specifications upfront.
Lanark would have no problem producing water for these additional four hundred and ninety-nine eventual lots?
So Lanark's running about a hundred thousand gallons a day, and I'm just going to put this in the long term, with all of Lanark in St. James Bay, we can run another hundred thousand gallons a day without a problem. And what's out there is, is in the four or five thousand gallons a day. You go really big pushing, until you get some houses out there, or Lanark and St. James Bay grow even more, so, uh, they're taking more water. This, we could juggle this, the whole system as one, Summer Camp, St. James Bay, and Lanark.
At some point, Lanark might get overloaded, and you might not be able to add any more Lanark water system, is what he's trying to say.
Okay.
Right, and then the ultimate, for the ultimate build-out out there, Lanark could not provide one hundred percent.
And then I was going to go on, and then ask even further about, not sure if St. Teresa folks want water, we know they want sewer. We know they want fire hydrants, so we wanted to provide fire hydrants.
Now, the, the ground storage and the pumps that they have there, well, we'd have to, in St. Teresa, that's, that's a, that's a little, the, uh, I don't know the distance, but, I mean, it's-
You know, originally, Summer Camp was designed for a lot bigger system than it's turned out to be. They'd cut off a lot of the land that they were developing.
Yeah, and, um, in fact, I think, I think Summer Camp actually adjoins St. Teresa.
It does.
On the east end, so, yeah.
It ties into St. Teresa.
So, um, the point is this, we'd have to look into it, but the system that's there now may provide fire flow, if it were expanded into St. Teresa.
There's always a way to add. You can add more wells, you can do anything to increase, and Russell knows this. Go to river, if you can. That's just my opinion. You may not have perfect order, but you can make it.
True, um, okay, well, I, just, um, as a suggestion for a, a, a next step here for, for us, would be, I think, I think we should lay out the, the conditions of operation from Carabelle's standpoint. I think we should write those out, discuss them with Charlie. I think we should write those out, discuss them with Charlie, um, make sure they're detailed enough, that we've identified everything. If we were to engage in an agreement, those would be the conditions of operation. And I don't know if that should be presented, once the city reviews it and agrees with it. I don't know that that should be presented to St. Joe in the form of a draft agreement or just an, just an outline. You know, they, they may, they may disagree with some of the conditions of operation on that. And, and if they do, Carabelle may decide to walk away from it. But I think that would be important to know now.
Well, now, I, I agree with, you know, laying out the conditions of the operation, because you have to. Now, they did present this to us as a, as a, as a presentation type of thing, not a draft agreement. I don't know if we would counter with, with another presentation, or like you say, would it be better to counter with a draft agreement? Are we ready to make a, a draft agreement? Is, is Charlie ready?
I'm, I still have a question about operations. I know Charlie and I've listened to Russell and Charlie now for a few minutes back and forth, back and forth, and I, I hesitate in my mind about staffing, whether we're gonna need to add staff or we don't need to add staff. You say that you've mentioned it to the guys, some of them may want some overtime, et cetera. We're gonna have to know from you whether we need to add staffing or if we're gonna be able to do it. Depending on the current staff to put in that overtime, we're gonna have to answer some of those questions. And I guess to summarize my feeling right at the moment, and I felt this way all along. And I've said part of it before, I'm very interested in this partnership with St. Joe and Summer Camp. But only at the point of not costing the city of Carabelle money that we don't have. If we can break even, we can make money, I'm, I'm, I'm good for it. And if St. Joe's wanting to put up the money and we cover all the bases about expense, what it's gonna cost us to operate and maintain, all the things that Charlie knows that we have to do, all the things that Russell knows we have to do, I'd like to continue. But again, we don't have the money to, I say we don't, I don't think we do. I don't think the city of Carabelle and the citizens of Carabelle that's currently on water and sewer can afford to put money into Summer Camp when they're not really getting a benefit from it. But anyway, that's just my feeling, you know where I'm going there. But I'm with the mayor, we need to put in a, put together a specific detailed plan, but we're gonna have to, I think we're gonna have to have some, some positive direction from Charlie and from Russell. I definitely don't want to see us put our backs against the wall to where we're caught in a contract, to where we have no, if you will, way to run, or way to escape, or way to retreat, uh, to where we are in that pinch. I would definitely want our agreement to be to where we do have an option. And I wouldn't want to base on hypothetical figure, base our agreement on hypothetical figures, that we may have two hundred customers in two years. We currently have, I think, thirty-eight. Uh, I know this home builder is potentially, potentially, see, that's the key word, potentially. If something happened to the real estate market as the mayor described, and it crashes, we may still wind up with thirty-eight, who knows? But I don't want us to get into a situation where we're get, or, or we're counting and planning for those and they don't materialize. So anyway, I'll stop, I'm rambling on, but that's kind of the way I feel. Thank you, Mayor.
Certainly, and I agree, but I, I don't, it's not going to, I, I would just say right now, it's not gonna cost the, this, this process should not cost the ratepayers of the Carabelle Water and Sewer Enterprise one penny.
Absolutely.
Period. It can't be money they don't have or have or whatever. This is a separate undertaking at this point, it's not, it's gonna be, have two separate, if it comes to pass, two separate books, accounting, budgets, whatever. Charlie did say in the very beginning that, that the city needs an out to, to terminate the agreement.
Right.
Not Charlie, um, Russell said that and that would be worked up in the agreement through Mr. Hartman. I don't, I, I hate to turn it down because I know that the enterprise has always wanted to be a regional provider. It's a good opportunity to reach out and be a regional provider. Be good experience for staff eventually. But I think to, to lay out the conditions of the operation, which that's gonna be a lot of work on your part, so who, who is funding you at this point?
St. Joe.
So you're keeping separate affiliate records for them, okay. The staffing, that's, that's the, the main thing. We want, we would have to know that these, your, your workers, your licensed operators would want to do overtime. Are they willing to do overtime? It's okay right now, okay, well, I'll work overtime, but if you're looking at it two years, they might get tired of it, do they?
Sure, I'll have a conversation with my staff and when we get back together, I'll, I'll report back to you.
And you said it would be, well, right now, you're making, you're only needing overtime one day a week, right, for, to make water, is that right?
No, well, so I don't exactly know what the requirements for the state are, what the state's requiring. I'm assuming that that water plant requires a person two hours a day, whether it makes water or doesn't make water.
Okay.
But one day a week, it takes about five hours to make water. So that operator would have to be there longer that one day a week. At this point, if they were busy, it may be two days a week. I, I know, uh, the, the more houses they put in and, and, you know, summer's real well. I know the Fourth of July, the center tank truck drove quite a bit into the waste water plant, the hallway. But other weeks previous to that, I might see them once and I see them six times on a Sunday over the holiday weekend. So there's, there is a difference. It might not be exactly one day a week that the water gets made. But when you have to make water, it's about a five-hour process.
And that's only going in reach.
Right, if they get their, if there's thirty houses, Mr. Moore gets their thirty houses going, then that will maybe be two days a week. So an operator could look at every third week working without a day off.
But you, you can also back up a little bit. There are companies out there that, that does this kind of work. Southern Water Service, I think, they contract out operators. Charlie's worked for them, might still be working for them on the side, I don't know.
You know, that's, that's a good one, because just adding up the hours here, it looks like that would be about twenty hours a week tops. Which is definitely part-time. So I don't know if we would have the staff to, to cover that many hours a week.
And that's just right now.
Yeah, yeah, that's just right now. But the, the idea of the, of a contract operator's not a bad idea to bridge, to bridge the gap.
There might be someone in this room that might be interested, I don't know.
Understanding that the reason they're talking.
Oh, you let it go?
I'm good, well, I've got that.
You can probably get that back in a minute.
I'm in Tennessee a lot.
Every third week?
The bottom line, hearing this, obviously, they're losing money every year. We can see it, they're basically reporting a lot of money. They're trying to stop losing that much money. They're looking to the city to solve their problem, right? And I'm, I like helping people and we're working through all these different concepts and everything else, that's all good. But we're really going to, going to the distance as far as really trying to solve a problem that is theirs, that we have half a dozen ways to deal with, and we're actually diving in what I would consider is the hardest, we're taking the hardest path to solve their problem. It's taking over operations that they can't do and break even on now. They could hire Southern, there's a number of management companies they could hire to come down here, but that does, that makes it even worse for them, right? They would end up losing even more money every year. So to shift that onto us and then to go through the level of detail that we're talking about to try and not lose money, that the citizens of Carabelle, what is the public benefit of doing what we're talking about doing is ten years out, fifteen, twenty years to, to flatten the rate curve for this, for the overall system? Doesn't even come close to doing that now, right? I mean, it, it only, that's why we keep separate books and we, we go to St. Joe to get us, to pay us back for every additional cost of which we will probably not catch all of. And that doesn't mean, it may not be a de minimis amount of money, but I mean, there's, everything we've talked about is, you know, is, it's a lot of detail, right? That if anything we miss, now our ratepayers are paying it, but the city's paying it. We, we're working off of their proposal, not some of our original proposals, right? Because this has evolved over time. They didn't like our original proposals, which were, which I'm not, I don't wanna go back to, I'm not pushing that necessarily. They provide bulk service, but on the water side, it sounds like we almost have that, right? We're gonna ultimately, or shortly, I would hope that we would, whatever size line it is out there, but it's, the line's sufficient to feed their water tank and it would serve their water customers. Water makes money, sewer loses money on a water system. I've done this all around the state, exactly what we're looking at doing here, interconnecting things, looking at the financial end, the physical. I'm not as up on what I'm interested listening here on the staffing end, on the capital improvement side. Usually it's someone who's heavy into the details and operations that tells me, this is the staff, this is what it's gonna cost. These are the capital improvements, this is what they're gonna cost. And then I look at these spreadsheets and do the agreements and all this other stuff, all, like I say, over all these years, different places in the state, not here. But they've got a, they've got a problem, being sort of in a nutshell, they've got a problem. We don't have to dive into that level of detail now. We can tell them, hey, when you hit this point, you know, for now, we'll take all your sewer, we'll dump it in the plant. We will interconnect with your system and pump you water and fill your tank so you can serve thirty-eight and hopefully seventy-eight. Their estimate was hoping that they get seventy, that's residential taps sold. But we don't have to dive in at the hardest time, which is right now, right? Now is the time that they've got the most, well, they're trying to sell us on diving in because of the potential of the place, right? Well, why wouldn't possibly let that potential be, be realized a little bit before we get into as deep as we're talking about right now getting into with them? We can provide, we can, we can send them water, we can help them with operations, but we can send them water through the line we're talking about with the interconnect, that'll let them not have to operate the, the water side. We could even take over just the water side, leave them with the sewer side, right? Leave them, St. James Utility, operate the sewer side. But to me, and I do this a lot, right, people, a problem is meant to be solved and we're really taking on trying to solve their problem. And we should maybe step backward and let them solve their own problem. They're dealing with the artwork and they know what their development schedule is. Let them build out a bit more before we get into full-time operation of their utility.
Ain't that kind of what they're doing, asking you to, us, the city to do, but they're gonna maintain the, the cost of the, or, until it break even?
They're telling us, what I'm hearing in there, that's fair, right? But they're saying, hey, guys, come on in here, take all this operational issues off, but we'll deal with the financial. You just tell us what it's costing you and we'll reimburse you. But that's an effort, that's a lot of effort on our part, too.
It is a lot of, I mean, just us, us being here to discuss it, you know, we're, we're putting in time here and taking away from Charlie's time and the staff's time to try to figure out how to work this problem, and Commissioner Melgar?
Yes, ma'am. First question is, we talked about, since Russell mentioned it, was the interconnect for the water. Who's gonna fund that?
St. Joe, I would, I would ask St. Joe to fund that.
Okay, what was, that was a part of what we discussed quite a while back.
It is.
Okay, interconnecting water and sewer, right? And they, well, whatever, okay, St. Joe fund, that's, that's what you're saying is, and I'm agreement with that. If we're gonna interconnect, okay. And this is gonna be a layman term. Our agreement, if we enter into one with St. Joe company, should plainly be that we'll operate with no loss of money and you pay the bill. We'll operate, you pay the bill. When it gets too expensive and you don't want us to operate no more, we're done. Does that make, and, and that's kind of a layman way to say it. But when, when St. Joe says, hey, we can't afford to do what you are doing to operate our water and sewer, or water, whichever we decide, when they say they can't afford us anymore, then we're done.
I agree with that, and, and we also had, the other side of the coin needs to be from Carabelle's standpoint. If, if Carabelle decides that it's problematic for them to operate, then we can hand it back.
I guess what I'm saying in my statement, in my layman statement, is we're gonna operate it, whatever Charlie's, and you say it's gonna take and cost. And they're gonna pay for it. And if they don't wanna pay for it, then, yeah, I agree, but that's just a layman statement. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and under this two C, which we've talked before on their first page, it says, St. Joe is willing to discuss underwriting operating costs or deficits, they, they use the word deficit in their presentation, for a period of time. So what does that, what does that mean, a period of time? And they would, they would do the, you know, the actual cost, but they want, they don't want a markup. So it seems in a way that they're wanting to hire Carabelle Water and Sewer Operations to manage that operation, like a contractor to manage it. One of you said that they could hire any, any other water and sewer management company to come and operate it.
What, what could you hire, hire that company and then pay for it right now?
Because that's an idea too, and, but there's no markup. Where is the, where is the incentive for the city of Carabelle's staff?
The incentive, the incentive for Carabelle is you, you get a system, a water and sewer system at no cost.
Well, and, and the way I see it, the incentive for the city of Carabelle, that's true. And if, if, big word, these future customers, if that materializes and grows as it, as it could, no guarantee it will, but it could, then it would be a good customer base for the set water and sewer of the city here.
It would be a good customer base.
That's, that's if it grows, that.
Well, up here, you, you looked at all of St. Joe developments, all ramps.
Exactly.
Have you ever seen them not work? I've always seen them pull a field up. This one will be a little.
And, and this one.
This one did not work.
And, and.
And maybe working out, maybe it worked for two years.
I think he made a valid point, but the thing about it, I know when Summer Camp was developed, and it's been a long time.
It's been a while coming.
And there's not a whole lot going on. It doesn't say it won't, but I don't like to, my feeling, I don't like to bank on what could be. Thank you.
I, I think, just listening to their presentation last time, uh, they, they want out. I mean, they want to operate this thing, and I think when she says, you know, she says a management agreement term for two years. You know, she, I think in their mind, they have, they wanna, they wanna sever their responsibility at, at a certain time. But I don't, I don't think Carabelle can afford to, to make that kind of commitment.
And we can't see into the future to know what real estate works for.
Well, if you look at the past, it ain't gonna work, for sure.
So it's gonna have to be, it would have to be on Carabel's terms.
Well, that's the reason why I keep using that statement of mine, saying I don't wanna bank on what probability is. I mean, I would love to see it materialize, and it might, and I hope it does, but I don't wanna bank on it either.
And just again, just for consideration, as everybody's noted, if there's the management side, and they say they're gonna cover all the costs, they could do that now. They could simply hire a management company, they're out of Tallahassee, they're out of, as Keith said, they're in different locations, they can have someone come do that. But there's a reason they're not doing that, and it's financial, most likely right now. And then, on the city's side, and I guess I am reverting back to the idea, when this, we talked about the interconnection, you seem to put a meter in at that interconnection, they would pay us per gallon water to fill their tank, and on the sewer side, and tell them, hey, we'll accept all the sewer you can truck to us, because that's really how the sewer, the sewer interconnect is a truck right now, right? And they drive that over the plant, and Charlie deals with it, and we get paid for that. And until they meet some sort of threshold numbers that they're saying are gonna happen, they think they're gonna happen in two years, they think they might happen in four years. When they meet those numbers, then we dive into this more, you know, it's almost in three phases, right? First phase is just some form of interconnect, whether it's trucking sewer over and disposing of it, they'll have to take it to Waculla, all this, and then water. And then the second phase is we take over management, but now we have an actual system to manage. There's 70, 100, 200 customers, and then we ultimately take ownership of the system, that's phase three.
So it seems more, you're making it more simplified, that, and first fall's gonna take two years at least to get their wastewater system up and running. And so there's really no reason for our staff to be involved with wastewater system, except to oversee if we plan on taking that facility, taking on that facility, to make sure that they're getting it operating in the proper manner. But meanwhile, then, there's nothing that staff, is that correct, Charlie? Would have to be doing while these next two years or so, while they're connecting, setting up the wastewater system, other than taking on the hauling.
I think there's a little more to it than that. You see the 24-hour service, you got grinder pumps and such that might go bad. Nobody's gonna be there. They use Shane Dudley right now for all that. Water meter reads, the billing, we're not really looking at any of that. They don't have anybody doing that necessarily, they're kinda on their own. Now, I don't have a problem with that. They can do that first two years until they get it all put together, if that's the direction we wanna go. And they cover it up. Like I said, you get a service to do all their work. Why would we do a little piece of it and have somebody else do the larger part of it? Why would we do any of it at that point? And if we just wanted to bulk rate it, they would have to have that in place. Somebody to do their 24-hour service, somebody to read and do their billing and all their customer complaints. I mean, I know it's not much, because there's not many customers. But then you got a water plant, you got lightning strikes, I'm just pulling things out of my hat, you know, a pit trip to breaker, the pump didn't run, somebody's gonna run out there and do that. They don't have anybody besides this Shane Dudley guy, he does it all. And I kinda feel like he doesn't wanna do that, and hire a service that did all of that, that's a harder service to find. If you found one just to do your operations, but not all your 24-hour service, that's where our staff would come in, would be that 24-hour service. At any call, you're gonna get somebody, or any time of the day, you're gonna get somebody on the phone, they could go out there and fix that water break that's shooting up in the middle of the night in the air. They don't have any of that, except for Shane as well. So there is a, there's a, yes, you can just hire a contractor to come in and do the operations, but there still leaves the other half of the system that's not being.
You have two different systems, contracted and managed.
It's a hard transition, that's why we've been dealing with it for so long. The transition's not gonna be easy.
And I'm looking at my calendar, because it's not gonna be easy, and this is a major decision. I don't want us to feel like we have to make it in an hour or an hour and a half. This is, maybe we need to think about meeting again. Maybe we wanna meet later after our workshop today and continue the discussion. I'm just trying to figure it out, it's not something that we can, we'll need to take a lunch break here shortly, because we have a workshop scheduled at 1:30, and that may take a half an hour, 45, it could take an hour. But we could take this discussion up again after that workshop. We'd like to table this meeting until 2:30 or 3 o'clock. Can we do that, Mr. Hartman? You've got an appointment.
I do.
Could we maybe do it after the CRA meeting, or before, before or after?
Next week.
On the 19th.
And then maybe it'll give Dan some time to put something together and writing, and then we can review it. Would that be possible?
So I'll be out, I'll be mixing.
Maybe, I don't know who's been, I mean, I know I talked to her one time, but not in detail. It was more discussing meeting stuff, but I think Russell's been dealing directly with St. Joe new folks, and we've hit on some interesting things today. And I can make a list, a little list of questions that I'd be curious, you know, have they already explored the contract management thing? I mean, would they, you know, this is their proposal, and we're kind of working off of it. We've had proposals in the past, too, and those have just been kind of, well, they paid for them, so we're not complaining. But they certainly just bypassed those and gone directly to, hey, you guys are gonna take over in two years, and take over our management and save us money. And we can certainly save them money. I mean, that's the thing, I'm not, that doesn't bother me, you know, obviously, that we would, they're our neighbor, we can help out, we can all work together. But again, the overall thing, and just as Charlie had just mentioned, diving into the operations, the maintenance, the everything, I have a hard time seeing where we aren't gonna lose a little bit of money. And I understand, we say, hey, we're gonna account for it separately and cover all those costs. It's, there's, I'm just saying, you know, whether, you know, if the truck throws a rock over here on Trippin Land Arch, or is it, I mean, we can't have St. Joe pay for that, maybe they shouldn't pay for that. But we're, this is a difficult, we're really bending over backwards to try and fix a problem. It is not our problem, you know, it is not our problem, it's their problem.
Like you say, combining our equipment with their services, you know, our vehicles, and I can definitely see right away, time, any kind of time, being spent with staff.
Absolutely.
And us, and there's no way that we can calculate it.
Yeah.
Here's what I would, here's how I would respond to that. I would say, you know, Carabel is the best thing to come along for Summer Camp and that system. I mean, there's no one else in the vicinity, in this area, who could perform that work like Carabel can. And, you know, they're saying that they won't offer a markup, but I think that's reasonable to ask for. I think it's reasonable to ask for that, for a markup on whatever cost that is incurred.
Cost plus a percent?
Right, right. Because of the ability for Carabel to perform, it's worth it. And I think it'd be worth it to them.
You gotta understand, if you have a water line break out there, there's gonna have to be someone to go back out there once it's fixed and pull those water samples. They're gonna have to take them to the lab. I guess they still use the water spigot out of my city?
We use it downstate.
They have it at Tallahassee, and they use it down here every day. But all this has gotta be done. As far as, God. I don't guess that would have to be a operator, or would it?
Cool sample's an operator, yeah.
Yeah, so you gotta have a licensed operator for water sample. Now, getting them to the lab, it could be, I mean, you.
That comes pretty much every day, we're on that part.
But water's different, Charlie knows this. You get that water sample, they come early. Charlie?
10 o'clock.
People's on boil water notices, you know, I'm saying that, at this point in time.
If it's appropriate, I'd suggest that we have Russell, Dan, and Charlie put together these bullet points. It's been discussed and it's made. And maybe Russell wants to run them by Ms. Precyce, just for information purposes, not for a meeting and discussion. Just run those discussion bullet points by, and then we'll come together again, and at some time, we'll choose a time, and we'll continue this further. That's just my thought.
One other thing that I just sit here and thought of, but I haven't heard mentioned, is Charlie talked about equipment a while ago. When we, the City of Carabel took over Land Arch, we got a cat's bill backhoe from them with that takeover. Are you gonna get anything from them out there, or you're gonna have to run your cats out there too? I mean, you're talking a lot of expensive, you're gonna hire it back and forth. You get ours out there, and we need it here. You're looking 10 miles up, 30 minutes to arrive.
Charlie, do they have any equipment out there? And everything they do is pretty much hired.
And I'm thinking, put it in, we need a cat, we need this, the size that you guys got.
Put that in.
I mean, all it does is take you down.
It stays with the property? A truck.
I would need it everywhere, that's exactly. I'm fine, however it all works out, I mean, you know, what this is.
I'm just saying that we did get something from Land Arch.
We put in a ton of money at what our experience.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
By the millions, and maybe even close to 10,000, I don't know, it was out there pretty hard.
And we don't want to have to do that again.
No, we don't wanna have to.
Learn from our mistakes. And they don't, they want to quit losing money, but they, they're going to have to pay someone to operate the facilities out there, one way or the other. They can't just go for a period of time and say, okay, we're not gonna pay you anymore in two years, three years, or five. It's until it's functional, it's self-sufficient.
Do we wanna schedule another meeting now?
Well, I mean, we can't, we're in a meeting, we can't schedule another meeting. Tuesday on the 19th, is that?
Mr. Charlie will be out.
Oh, Charlie.
So what about the 26th? Tuesday, the 26th.
I'm sorry, but I'll be out of town that week.
The whole week?
Whole week.
Can you guys go together?
It's vacation time, July. I'd hate to.
Yeah, that puts us all over in the, I guess, August.
Yeah, well, we could go, we could go in August. We could do it on the City Commission Day, even in the morning, if you want to.
I'd like to.
Before the City Commission meeting?
We could.
Let me get it set really long.
We can meet at 4 o'clock?
I can be here at 4:30.
We can take a break then before, I mean, we've been here discussing an hour and a half, and I think it's been a good discussion.
I'll have to motion we have drawn.
All right, we have that motion, but we need to, we have a motion, and we have a second.
Are we through?
Yeah. Just a quick question.
Well, we have a motion.
I know we did.
Well, let's just, don't, let's all have a second.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Let's hold off and discussion, we're in discussion now. We have a motion by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Melander, discussion. Let's postpone this motion for a few more minutes.
Exactly. That was not discussion.
We're gonna postpone the motion for a few minutes?
Yes.
Okay. So what day you wanna meet then? We're trying to set up a date here to meet. Okay, again.
On the 4th?
4:30 on August 4th.
Okay. All right. So before we have that motion, we need to have a motion to have a meeting at 4:30.
I think we need to set the meeting, I mean, we don't need a motion to have a meeting.
Especially?
Is it a workshop?
A workshop, sorry, workshop. We need to set a workshop.
Would it be a workshop or a meeting?
It depends on if you wanna take action or not.
And we had to take action here to set up that meeting.
I mean, if they agree to all of our ideas, we may wanna take action.
I don't know if we can do that in a matter of an hour and a half, or less, an hour.
I mean, I think, I mean, my, I think a workshop would probably be the best thing to do, because we're kind of doing this, at some point, we're gonna have to reengage significantly with St. Joe, and things will change again.
All right. And then, if we have a workshop before the commission meeting, and we agree in principle on something like we need another meeting, we can do that at the commission meeting. Okay, so we're going to have a workshop at 4:30 on August the 4th, right? Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second.
Okay, and that's by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Melander. Any further discussion on August the 4th at 4:30? Okay, any, all in favor? Any opposed, and that motion carries. Okay, so now, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen, and a second by Commissioner Melander to adjourn. Okay, everybody in favor? Okay, and that carries. All right.
See you.